Good evening. Call to order, the City Council meeting of September 25th, 2017. Will all members rise and salute the flag?
For the citizens of the state of the city of the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, and the legal, legitimate, just as a whole.
Thank you. Roll call.
Roll call of the members, Councillor Gennaro.
Here.
Here, Councillor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councillor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councillor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councillor Nowosowski is absent. Councillor Patch.
Here.
Here, Councillor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councillor Rotundo is absent. Councillor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Councillor Vice President Keith.
Here, and Councillor Nowosowski is also here.
He is present as well. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of September 11th, 2017.
So order.
Council Order 17-342, Communication from the Director of Finance Regarding the Transfer Request for the Procurement of New Voting Machines in the Amount of $112,000.
Good evening, Councillors, Council members. At this time, I have sent a communication for the transfer of funds for $112,000 for the new voting machines for the city of Revere. As you know, your Honorable Boddy had, as it says in the first part of my letter, had voted to approve the use of the new DS 200 precinct tabulators on August 28th, and to discontinue the former equipment. So this order that we're looking for for a transfer, we identified the funds in the Capital Stabilization Reserve Fund, which was established for this type of purchases, this type of a purchase. We are asking for the transfer out of that account into an account, into the Election Department Materials Account, so that we can be able to pay for the voting machines. Further is that what also is going to be taking place tonight is that we went over the available bond funds. These are funds that, which I'll explain to you further when the item comes up on the agenda, but I just want to take it up here because they sort of interact, intermingle. The $235,431.03 of available bond funds from various issues, which we have a list of. So it'll net us out if we take this action, we'll end up with a positive $123,000 if we take both actions, and we'll also have new voting machines, which I think we desperately need. All the bidding procedures were done properly. This is one of the two state-approved voting systems. It's been run through the wringer to make certain that it works properly. A number of people have viewed it, and that, as we all know, it's something that's needed, and the old machines just aren't working as well as they should. So along with your, you know, your account, as I said, your Honorable Boddy has voted to approve the use of these, to discontinue the former equipment and use the new DS 200 precinct tabulators, and here's the request to fund that, here's the amount to fund that request, and that's what we're looking at. And it's not coming out of appropriations, it's coming out of a capital improvement project, Capital Stabilization Reserve Fund, that we had put the money in there for this type, these type of purchases.
Thank you. And Mr. Anzoni, you were speaking on behalf of two motions, or two communications, 17-342 and 17-343. We will take them up separately.
Okay.
But I appreciate you bringing them both up.
Okay, thank you.
So at this point, on 17-342, does any, any Councillors wishing to speak? Councillor Morabito.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I just want to say, I've been an advocate for this, and I know my colleague, Councillor Zambudo, has as well. It's about time that we get caught up with modern technology and get new voting equipment. I commend Dan Calala and the mayor for moving this forward, because we put in a motion and passed a motion this year, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Morabito. Any other Councillors wishing to speak? Councillor Zambudo.
Obviously, I'm in support of this, although my recount was when we had a brand-new voting machine. It was the optical scan, it was the first time used, and there had never been someone lose a recount with an optical scan machine, but I did. But...
That's why we're changing the system.
That's history, and the good news is, is I never looked back after the election, so the people were kind enough to put me back here for many years, and, but I, all kidding aside, these machines are outdated, it's time for a new system, and that's why we did this. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councillor Zambudo. Any other Councillors? Nope, no hearing and seeing none, we're going to roll call on this.
Shall the City Council approve a transfer in the amount of $112,000 from the Capital Stabilization Reserve Account to the Election Department Materials Account? Councillor Gennaro?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Rotundo is absent. Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Councillor Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Vice President, with hopes of no reconsideration?
No reconsideration? Motion reconsideration on the table?
You're welcome.
On the table?
Council Order 17-343, Communication from the Director of Finance to Transfer Available Bond Proceeds to the Special Reserve Capital Projects Fund in the Amount of $235,431.03.
Mr. Anzoni?
Yes. This is a, after we reviewed the, again, as I had mentioned previously, after we'd reviewed the capital fund accounts of the city of Revere, these are funds that become available, although you appropriate it for other purposes, however the project's been completed, there are still funds, still some funds remaining, and rather than keeping idle, the, we've asked bond council to draw up an order, an order to move these funds, however, there is a stipulation on these funds, they only can be for the like term which they originally have, that's why we have them separate, and they explained in my letter that the, could be one capital, a special capital reserve account for these monies, and there'll be, I believe, 10, eight to 10 different sub-accounts, so that way that we can track them by purpose, and that when we authorize them in the future for a capital, we request to authorize them in the future for any capital projects, we will have to go along with the like term. So they have to have the like term of the original issue that they were authorized for. So in doing so, again, with the previous loan order, the net is a positive $123,000 into the funds that will be available to use for our capital improvement program.
Thank you, Mr. Anzoni. Any Councillors wishing to speak? This is going to go, yeah, Councillor Nowosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President, Vice President. George, you know, I don't have a problem, because what we're doing is bringing back our bond money into the, into this fund, but, you know, one specific thing that's sticking out to me is that senior center of capital improvement, $46,000.
Right.
I know Councillor McKenna's been screaming about having the stairs fixed, and that brick fixed in the front, and I know all these seniors have been coming after me, you know, because I know them and I'm there all the time. Why can't we use this money to repair the stairs at the senior center?
Yeah, we had a discussion actually today about the senior center in the front of the senior center, and with the mayor, and this amount of money first has to be placed into the capital stabilization fund, and then we'll use this money for that purpose, but we're, again, going to need another vote of the council rather than doing it directly.
Okay.
So we can track the fund by purpose.
Okay, I don't know what the total cost would be to fix it.
Right.
I know there would probably have to be a bid on it.
Right.
But, you know, it's a shame to have, the way we're seeing things is this is just thrown into that fund, into that particular package.
Right.
And no particular use of it.
Right.
You know, pretend, but here we do have a use for it.
Right.
You know, to come out of it after the fact.
Right. And we, the mayor plans to use it for that purpose, he had a discussion with me today on that.
Okay. You know, and the seniors want to hear that, you know, they just don't want to see a broken stairs and not hearing about what's going on.
Okay.
And I think it's important that they know that they're being listened to.
Okay, so once we get a, do some work on this, the next, there'll be another council, request from me, requesting that the amounts from the senior center capital improvements be utilized for the steps, stairs, and whatever needs to be done down there.
Okay.
Okay, and that's something the mayor agreed on today.
Okay, that's number one, Mr. President. Number two is, you know, I'm seeing the school construction monies being put back into this fund, and over the years, when we've done, what, five or six schools so far?
Right.
I don't believe one school has a construction plaque on it, that we've been screaming about for at least 10 years, since we started the school program. You know, just showing who the contractor was, who the city council was, who the school committee was, superintendent of schools, not one school has those plaques on it, and I even have a list of everybody that's supposed to be on those.
Right.
And I think it's a shame that this plaque, these plaques were not put on these schools, to give people the credit where the credit is due.
Agreed, and we've, I've had this discussion years ago, the, and I think we both had the discussion years ago, and I believe there was a school committee vote saying that they were going into the school building program originally back in 2000, with the idea that there wouldn't be any plaques in the schools. So unless, pardon me?
The Supreme Leader didn't want them?
Well, that's the case, but I think, you know, I think a council motion would be able to do that, I'm not certain, but whatever procedure you want to take place, and there's funds available, I'm sure that's something that's a discussion with the mayor, and, okay, it's not impossible, but...
Okay, one more, Mr. President.
They also, by the way, in most schools, put the director of finance on there, but that's okay.
Yeah. One last item, that it's not on this list, but about a month and a half ago, we approved $100,000 to do some various work, and one of those was $40,000 for the lights on Shirley Ave.
Right.
Somehow, nobody knows what account that went into.
Okay.
Allegedly, it was used to fund another account.
Was it? Okay.
So...
I can look into that, Councillor?
I've been in touch with the mayor's office on it.
Yeah.
You know, Joe Gravolisi was working on it, and I'm still waiting to hear where that $40,000 went.
Okay, I will take a look into that.
You know, and now, now we're, and I know we're bidding out for the lights now, it just went off a bit, but we need an appropriation for that.
Right.
So, and a reappropriation. So now it's costing us $50,000, another 10, because we added some parts to it. So, you know, I've spoken to the mayor, and I'm throwing it at you, because I don't want one person to know, or two people to know, I want more people to know about it.
Okay.
It is ridiculous that, you know, the folks in Shirley Ave have to walk in dark streets. Those lights are almost nine, 10 years old.
Right.
And we want to protect our people, public safety, right? So, you know, I just want to find out where that money is, and when it's going to be put back into that appropriation.
Into the account, okay. I will actually take a look at that and get back to you on that, Councillor.
Please do.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. President.
We're going to vote on this tonight, we have two, two roll call votes on this, for this evening. So we're going to go, we're going to take up two roll calls. Any other Councillors? No? Roll call on the first?
Shall the City Council approve the establishment of a Special Reserve Capital Projects Fund? Councillor Gennaro?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Rotundo is absent. Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Councillor Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the fund has been established.
Roll call on the second.
That in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, the unexpended balances of funds borrowed to pay costs of the projects set forth below, which amounts are no longer needed to complete the projects for which they were initially borrowed, totaling $235,431.03, are hereby transferred to the Special Reserve Capital Projects Fund for later appropriation by this council, to pay costs of future capital improvements, consistent with the provisions of said Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, including the payment of any and all costs incidental and related thereto. Councillor Gennaro?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Rotundo is absent. Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Councillor Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved. Council Order 17-344, Communication Relative to ETP Funding Appropriation Requests.
Mr. Anzoni, you're going to, you're going to be speaking on this?
Speaking on this one, yes, also. This is a request that has been approved by the ETP Committee, and it was made by Mayor Rigo, for various projects. One of them is the IT Department iCloud Migration for $450,000, the TV Studio Equipment for $42,901, Interactive Board Replacement Edition, $70,000, and Expanding Music Technology for $2,432.14. There's a description for these. I think the iCloud Migration, I do want to speak on that a bit. The city of Revere had purchased equipment, had a loan order back in, I believe in 2004, for new computer equipment. At the time, we purchased the most up-to-date equipment, but as you know, in the computer world, after five years, the equipment becomes outdated, and it does not run as properly as it should. However, the city stretched it out beyond the five years, up to 13 years, and that's what we're facing with now. We're facing with servers that are going to break down, and we're going to crash, and we're going to, we're not going to lose data, because we do have the backup, but at the same time, we want to move forward. And then there are some computer programs that we need in order to do our job better, especially in the financial departments, and the upgrade on some of the software will not run on the outdated equipment that we have, so it's holding us back. Also what's holding us back is the fact that the new Outlook will not run on the service. We do have security on the service to the level that we're able to, because of the dated service that we're using. The, what happens is, is that with the iCloud, we actually are getting into now a very strong cybersecurity. So along with this, this isn't the total amount of the project, some money has been appropriated in the budget, and, excuse me, if you remember, or you, to remind you that there was some $474,000 that was put into the budget for the upgrade to the cloud. Now, there are a number of things that are in there, that's moving into the cloud, this will actually be, in the end, further down, it may be somewhat of a cost savings in the future years, but if we had to do in a comparison of going with servers and going with the cloud, believe it or not, it would have cost us over the years, because of the bond authorization that we went out and put out, I think just for the new computerization that we had to get, it was a $1.8 million bond issue we're looking at, rather than bond the city, it was felt better that, as most cities and towns are doing, you put it right in your operating budget and do it on a yearly basis, as you do the cloud, because the cloud is something that is not bondable, because it's not tangible, you can't touch it, it's not something you can look at and say, oop, there's the cloud, but it's because it's not allowed under the national law. So put it into the budget, this amount will give the sufficient funds in order to move to the cloud, the expectations that if we start now, we'll be able, within a six to eight-month period, have the cloud up and running. We have a company that we've already looked at to do it, and give us these services, and we're ready to go. And the city needs this, because, again, we have a breakdown, lots of information, we have, we will have a security problem. So there's a number of things that being, going into, looking into the future, a number of things that are being handled by this appropriation. But next year, in the budget, there won't be any money asking for ETP funds, the ETP funds that will utilize, really on ETP funds, what they are, they're cable, capital cable funds. They, each quarter, the city receives from the cable communication, cable company that we have, Comcast at the time, gives us an amount, and it's a 60/40 split, 40 goes into the ETP fund, 60 goes into the capital improvement for cable TV and like areas. There was a large amount of money in there, and it hadn't been used in a number of years. However, when these new contracts are signed, and hopefully there's one with RCN also, and the Comcast, there's a fee that they have to pay at the beginning, which will reimburse these accounts, they'll have more than enough money at that time in those accounts. So this is a, one place we could find the funds in order to step off this project. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Any Councillors wishing to speak? So I have brief comments, it's my understanding that there's, there's a significant amount of money in this fund, so the city really won't be incurring much cost. We took on about half of the cloud project via the budget, and the other half is going to be paid through this ETP fund, which, like I said, just recently, has been found that there's a significant amount of money in there.
Right.
Not costing the taxpayers anything.
Right.
And if everyone, everyone knows, in this day and age, with cybersecurity, the, this will significantly reduce the vulnerability of our, of our, of our system. So I would be in favor, just based on that, we have to upgrade at some point, and going to the cloud. I think you made Glenn DeRosa proud, at how many times you were able to talk about that, probably not knowing as much, but...
Right.
I'd be, I'd be in favor with that, in the improved in technology at the schools, so. Councillor Nowosowski?
A quick question, through you to the speaker, how much money is in this ETP fund account?
Well, now, there's not as much as there was, but at the same time...
I didn't ask that.
There is an amount, well, I don't have that off the top of my head, but there was a, an availability of funds letter from the city auditor. I don't have that, but that I can get for you.
Are we talking over a million?
No.
You're not. Now, all this money comes from Comcast?
Comes from Comcast, that's correct.
Based on everybody's bills that they pay into them, it's reimbursed to us?
Based on the bills they pay, and there's an ETP charge on these, one of the bills that was put in, what was, 20 years ago? And that amount of money, and there's also licensing money that comes into the city once we sign these contracts, so there's a number, those are two areas it comes from, but it's split by a 40, 60 percent, so that 40 percent goes into ETP fund, 60 percent goes into this capital fund, and money hadn't been used out of this capital fund for a while, so that's why there was this amount of money in there.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you. Roll call?
Shall the City Council approve a transfer in the amount of $545,333.14 from the ETP account as follows? $450,000 to the IT Department iCloud Migration, $42,901 to the RHS TV Studio Equipment, $70,000 to the RHS Interactive Board Replacement in Addition, and $2,432.14 to the SBA Expanding Music Technology. Councillor Gennaro?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Rotundo is absent. Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Councillor Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the transfers have been approved.
Thank you.
Cal, I'm sorry, Council Order 17-137, the Economic Development Subcommittee Report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We had a brief, well, we had a nice presentation from the HYM group today, they outlined a lot of what their hopes and thoughts are for the project. Obviously, the Suffolk Downs project is going to be, takes some time to fully develop, but it was nice to have some, some communications from that group. At this point, I'd like to place on file this, this order, and we can, we can move on to the next one.
Council Order 17-293, is the Ways and Means Subcommittee Report. This is relative to a communication from the Director of Finance for a transfer from the Water and Soil Enterprise Fund in the amount of $153,000.
Councillor Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President, Vice President. The Ways and Means Committee met early this evening, and it was unanimously voted that this money be approved. The money is being requested to reconstruct a water line on Fowler Avenue, which is in real difficult shape right now, and also after that, to repave the entirety of Fowler Avenue. Right now, anyone that's seeing construction going on down there, that's National Grid doing what they have to do, and once this is done, it's my hope that we'll never have to go back down there and, for, you know, quite a while, and no water breaks certainly, and National Grid will get all their work done that they need to get done. I can't see any more construction being done down there. So this is a, this is a good thing for, for the Fowler Avenue and for that area down there, its entirety. Most of the streets are done down there, and we, we've got, I think, two or three more that need to be done, and they will be done. Right now, we're up on Tapley Avenue, we're doing that section up there, and I would hope that the next area that would be done would certainly be Eastern Avenue, and that holy True Street, and that whole area up there, and then we'll get out of there and hopefully go into another area in the city. Thank you, Mr. President, Vice President.
Thank you, Councillor Powers. Any Councillors wishing to speak? Roll call?
Shall the City Council approve a transfer in the amount of $153,000 from the Water and Soil Stabilization Fund to the Water and Soil Enterprise Capital Projects Fund? Councillor Gennaro?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Rotundo is absent. Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Councillor Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved.
Thank you.
Next is the Public Works Subcommittee Report.
Councillor Nowosowski?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Mr. Vice President, we had four items, petitions from National Grid to install new pole locations along Revere Street, that's 17-279, 297, I'm sorry, 298, 299, and 300, and the amount of, the work that they want to do has nothing to do with the people on Revere Street. And right now, all this is doing is going to harass them and cause a lot of more double poles, and until such time, that a repair of Fiore's Market, of their electricity system, is repaired, the committee had voted to table this and schedule another meeting next week in case the work is done by the end of this week, which was a supposition. So right now, we're tabling these until such time that National Grid does their work. Thank you.
Mr. Vice President? Councillor Guanasso?
Mr. Vice President, I conferred with the Chair of Public Works, and after meeting with him, determined that I will meet with the owner of Fiore's and make full determination on Saturday morning, to see if, in fact, the work has been performed. I was here last week, and it wasn't performed, as of this point.
Councillor Zambudo? Council Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. My understanding is it will be done, but the, the problem is Fiore's is closed on Monday, that's when the switch over should take place. It shouldn't, you shouldn't interrupt his business. Saturday's obviously his busiest day of the year, of the week. So we don't want to, we don't want to hurt him any more than he's been hurt all, all these years. So I'm, I'm pretty confident from speaking to them that it, it is in fact going to be completed. But I, I certainly endorse what the committee did.
I too, I too endorse that and I think that the follow-up from the councils, Councils Novoselfsky and Guanasso will help this along and this will be tabled until the next council meeting or, in the next meeting that Council Novoselfsky has.
Next item on the agenda is the Appointments Subcommittee Report.
Mr. Vice President?
Council Guanasso?
Mr. President, Vice President, the early this afternoon, the Appointments Subcommittee met. We had five applicants for different positions to us, before us this evening. So the first being the appointment of Jana Como to the Cultural Council, that was approved unanimously. And then the, was the reappointment of Tufts Construction as a licensed drain layer, that was tabled. Appointment of John Hurley as a harbor master, that was approved. Appointment of Rapid Flow as a licensed drain layer, that was approved. And the reappointment of Joseph Lavalley to the Conservation Commission, that was also approved. Mr. Vice President, I asked that these all be taken up at once. If there's any exceptions, we pull that exception and I asked that the, all the, except seventeen two fifty-seven, which was, has been tabled.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Council Guanasso. So we'll take them all up and the two fifty, seventeen two fifty-seven is going to be tabled. Roll call.
Shall the city council confirm the appointments as reported by Chairman Guanasso? Councilor Gino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo is absent, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the appointments have been confirmed. Council Order seventeen dash three forty-six, motion presented by Council, by Councilor Keith, that the city council and the planning board implement a ban on the sale of recreational marijuana in Revere.
Thank you. Any councils wishing to speak? Council Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Though I appreciate your motion, let me start off by saying, not only did I vote against recreational marijuana, but I campaigned across the state hard for this not to pass, but it did unfortunately. And I'm sometimes called the heavy guy up here or the heavyweight because I, I deal in facts, not emotion. Okay? I know that a lot of people are going to come up here and some young mothers and their children are here and, and nobody wants to see them smoking marijuana less than me. Nobody. But the bottom line is here, we have to deal in facts and laws. Now, we have medical marijuana, we have an ordinance, we've approved that, and that would be the only place in the city that recreational marijuana could go. However, it's one thing to put a ban on recreational marijuana, but you're not really putting a ban because the Attorney General has just shut down delivery. Now, what I feel to mention is that Revere, all Revere surrounding communities have recreational marijuana in place. What you cannot stop, and I can read the, I can read the, the law from the Attorney General, but the bottom line is, no city or town shall prohibit the transportation of marijuana or marijuana products or adopt an ordinance or by law that makes transportation of marijuana or marijuana prod, prod, products unreasonably impracticable. Now, what that means is, you cannot stop any of these surrounding towns from bringing the marijuana here. So what this well-intentioned, well-intentioned ban would do, would take the three percent that the city of Revere would get, and don't think there won't be expenses extracted when medical marijuana is distributed here, and it will be distributed here. All we would do was prevent Revere from getting the three percent revenue that you would get for selling adult marijuana. Now, I said at the outset, I'm against recreational marijuana. I tried my best not to get it, but I deal in facts and not emotions here. So what I, I mean, I'm sure you're going to send this to my Legislative Affairs Committee anyway, but I wanted to put the facts on the table for my friends and neighbors to understand that I'm certainly not a proponent of recreational marijuana, but I have to deal in reality here and, and facts. Those are the facts. That's what will happen. So in essence, all this would do is prevent the revenue from coming to Revere. You can't stop the part from coming here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Novoselfsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I was kind of surprised when I saw this. I know we've been talking about it. And, you know, I'll go with, with the will of the, the council, but it was my understanding that even before they changed the law, that there may be an issue that we have already accepted medical marijuana, basically marijuana into our city. And I would like to see a legal opinion from our city solicitor as to whether or not, once we accept it, whether or not we can opt out of it. Because there was, there was a gray area when I was talking to folks, the legal folks, and I would like to see what the, our legal person has to say about this. And I would like to see it put in committee and hear this opinion from our city, city solicitor. You know, and, you know, I think it is an important issue and, you know, I tend to agree with, since somewhat with Council Zambudo, but I was always under the impression that from the courts, from the courts, you could not ban anything, you had to allow something somewhere. Now, as Council Zambudo said, based on our old ordinances that we started with the methadone clinics many years ago, and we included marijuana sales, whether it be medical marijuana or, or recreational marijuana, we had to allow it somewhere, which we did. And they're not on Broadway, they're not on Shirley Ave., they're not on Beachmont. We made sure they were far away from the residential areas, out of sight, out of mind, some, in some sort. But I would like to hear from our city solicitor on what his thoughts are on this prior allowance and how it affects the future of the shops that could be put up. So that's my thoughts on it now and I'd recommend the same thing as Council Zambudo to put it in committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Council Guanasso?
Mr. Vice President, I heard from the source that I'm going to pay attention to and that was the voters of Revere, and they voted overwhelmingly to deny this particular use within our community. Based on the legislation that was given to those individuals who worked so hard to put this on the ballot, the legislation stated that if in fact a local community voted against it, that would be the will of the law. Now, all these various interpretations with the, they can come up with the Attorney General and she can make all the decisions that she wishes and, and go and place whatever they want to do, but I know the mandate of this city was to deny such a use within our community and I honor that. I think that's the right thing to do. I think if this is a court case that has to be taken before the courts, so be it. I've seen many cases that we take before the courts. I was around when the Moonlight Video took us to court. We tried to ban that, but we didn't have the proper legislation in place to prevent, we didn't have zoning in place to prevent such a thing. We now have zoning in place and we now have awarded medical marijuana in place where zoning was proper. But that was for medical marijuana, quite different than recreational marijuana. I have cases now where people, residents have been talking to me as they traversed the streets of Ward Three, that their recreational use of pot in backyards are overwhelming and neighbors are having to ingest the fumes from these pot that's being smoked by these individuals. And low and behold, it's legal. Well, you know what? I just think that there's something wrong with this picture someplace, that if ingestion of smoke from a neighbor's yard affects your ability, your public health ability, then I think society has made some mistakes. I don't think this has a use within our system. I, and, and don't equate this to alcohol because there's two different structures. You certainly can't drink a beer driving down the street, but you, you can smoke a joint going down the street. Is that, is that right? I mean, you can't have a, a glass of wine walking down Broadway, but you can smoke a joint walking down Broadway? Where is the society coming to? I am so pleased tonight, when the National Anthem was said, in this audience, I looked out particularly. Every one, every one to the person stood up and had their hand on their heart. The disgraceful event that we saw watching the Patriots game and throughout the country, this is what the fabric of our country is coming to. We're watering down society though because the do-gooders and the liberal people are allowing this type of nature to take over the good, hard-working people who don't want to fight it any longer. But some of us have to fight the challenge and the challenge is very simple, common sense. Common sense is the big, and it's not, common sense is not so common anymore. I find all these abuses created within laws that we make. I ask this council, vote the wishes of what the people voted for, and I ask that we get the support from all the local residents who voted this way. And yes, there are going to be shouts out there against this. Of course, the shouts out, if I asked for a permit to sell Bibles on Sunday, there were people protesting against me because that's the way we live today. But I hope that the do-gooders outdo the no-gooders and so let's go forward, Mr. President, and, and make sure that this city council is on the record as opposing marijuana for recreational use.
Thank you, Councilor. Council Morabito?
Thank you. For those of you that don't know, when I first got on the council, I tried to, I put in a motion and I tried to increase the age of selling tobacco to twenty-one, twenty-one over the course of a three-year period. There was pushback, a lot of pushback from businesses. They claimed that they were, they were, they were so dependent on that sale because it was a large portion of their revenue, it was a large percentage. They discussed how it would hurt their revenue and result in them laying off employees. They even had employees come before the city council and explain how dependent they are on the pay that they receive from these businesses and how it would affect their livelihood. You know, some had children and they expressed they need to put food on the table if they get unemployed, which is heartbreaking. But the loss, my point was the loss of lives and a lot, the loss of getting these children, that getting these high schoolers and young adults hooked on cigarettes and the loss of life was a lot more dear in my heart. So with that said, keep in mind, this, keep in mind, we had an opportunity to change tobacco seals or the age or change the ordinance in our city for years, when, when the state first created law on tobacco seals. It was never done. We waited too long. We waited until people were affected, there were a long, a lot of cases of cancer and they proved that cancer was caused by cigarettes. Also, we waited until businesses expected revenue from seals of tobacco purchases, which would affect their livelihood. Keep in mind, a ban on recreational marijuana seals would be a proactive approach. It will prevent us from having to tell a business in the future, hey, we want to regulate this. And now the business got man says, hey, well, I'm dependent on these seals, someone's going to lose their job. And this is something we have to keep in mind. Is it better to take a proactive approach before businesses rely on that revenue, before businesses hire these employees based on that revenue that they earn? So these are all things that we need to look at and I think a proactive approach would be the best approach. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Morabito. I have some comments, but I'm not sure. I know there's some members of the audience looking to come up. I'd be happy to invite them up. A few people emailed me in advance, but would you like me to give my comments first?
I'd be happy to.
Not a problem. You got it. I'm going to go standard. Standard protocol, you know what? I'm looking to buck the trend a little bit on standard protocol. Well, Charlie, Councilor Patch would like to speak. I, I went on the side, went the other way. Charlie Patch?
Thank you, I appreciate that. I personally, I agree with Council Guanasso that I was, I was with the, the belief that if a city, I voted against recreational marijuana and like the majority of my, of the citizens of Revere did, and I, I was within the belief that in doing that, that we could stop it from coming into the city. Now, I don't know if they changed, they supposedly, whatever we voted on has been in the State House for I don't know how long. They've been working on it, doing, changing it, doing whatever they were doing. And I don't, I don't know, I don't know what the, what the results are. So I still have the belief that, that the way I voted against it and that we, as a city could keep it out, but I think we probably should get a legal view from our city solicitor, just in case, you know, they changed something while it was in the State House. If anybody else can answer that for me, gladly accept the, an answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Patch. By no means did I try to ignore you. And I will make my, my, my comments and invite anyone in the audience that would like to come up. We talk about standard protocol and, and I get it and I totally understand and Council Zambudo, you're experienced and you're very, you're very intelligent and I, and I respect the fact that you, you like to state the facts. I too sometimes have different facts. And I want to buck the trend a little bit in the sense that this council too often, and this is respectfully, and I'm all, I'm a member of this council, will say things like, we are afraid of going back to the Moonlight Video saga of twenty years ago. A lot has changed in twenty years and I was in this room, in the, in the audience three years ago when you did approve medical marijuana, which I was not very happy about, but it happened because of the fear of retribution or, or something down the road. There's over a hundred communities in the state looking to ban recreational marijuana right now. I want to be one of those communities. We have neighboring towns that did have their residents vote in favor of it and they're already trying to ban it. They voted in favor of it and they're trying to ban it. We voted not in favor of it and we're going to try and ban it. I'm going to help try and ban it in this city. I'm sick and tired of every off, off-colored business trying to come into our city, Revere, because they, they seek, they seek vulnerable communities, they seek low-income or middle-income communities that they feel that they can get one over on. Go open up the recreational marijuana in Arlington, in Medford, in Cambridge, in Somerville, those communities voted in favor of it. Revere did not and we're not going to have it. And our council is going to stand up and say that we're not in favor of it either. And our city solicitor should weigh in it. Yes, I'm not that stupid. I would absolutely ask for his opinion or their opinion. But it states very clearly in the new legislature by our, our State House, that if a city or a community voted not in favor of it, the city council has the right to disapprove it. That's clear. There may be some new literature in there or something, another section A of one thousand two hundred and sixty-one, but we have an attorney and I'm going to ask that our attorney represents us and we ban it in this city, Revere. And if they want to do it in other cities, feel free and we'll try and stop it. But we have zero, there are zero ways to stop people from driving under the influence right now. There's no detection devices. This entire law is a joke because like Council Guanasso said, we'd stand down too often when we should stand up. And I'm sick and tired of it. We're going to stand up this time. We're going to make some noise in the city and you're either with me or you're against me and that's fine, you have your opinion, but we're going to stand up. So now I will invite anyone in the audience that wants to come up and talk.
Excuse me.
Yes, Council Zambudo?
I think I have a, since I spoke first.
Council Zambudo, go ahead.
With all due respect, and I appreciate your passion, I get passionate of a lot of issues up here. I don't appreciate my facts being questioned as not facts or alternative facts. Facts are stubborn things. Facts are facts, I deal in facts. If I thought for a minute we could ban recreational marijuana and protect.
The seal, the seal.
Seal. As I said in my earlier statement, all you would do by banning the seal is, is keep the revenue out, but the marijuana would come from the surrounding communities and you can't stop that by law. I'm not looking for a debate. I appreciate how you, your position on this. My position was strong. My position was stronger than yours, I would dare say, when this was on the ballot. I worked hard, really hard. I was terribly disappointed that this thing passed. It was—it was a real blow. So anyways, I—I really think we need this to go to committee. We need a city solicitor's opinion. We need to review this law, and maybe—maybe, just maybe—the Attorney General is wrong, and we can find a way to get around what she says. But if we can't, I can't support blocking the revenue coming in here when the pot's going to come here. You get it?
Thank you, Counselor Zambudo. And I'd like to invite anyone in the audience that would like to come up and speak. If there—if there are a number of people—we'll keep it—try and keep it short under one minute. Ms. Ty, school committee woman.
Carol Ty, 51 Endicott Avenue. Well, I'm here, and I don't think I can stay within one minute, but I'll make it as brief as I possibly can. You've listened to me before when it was a medical marijuana issue. I was very much opposed to that, and I was there representing Revere Cares. That is our—and Revere Cares is the Substance Abuse Coalition. We're trying to keep our kids safe from drugs and alcohol, and—and so there will be people here, people here today who are doing it. I'd like to address first Counselor Zambudo's motion. I have read what the Attorney General said, and my idea was, as I interpreted it, that yes, you could not ban the transportation. I'm not naive. I do not believe we can put up a fence around Revere and that people will not come in with it. I do agree with that, but I do think it's dark money, and I—I do not want to be a part of that dark money. I don't think—I—I can understand why the council was in favor of the medical marijuana because that's slightly different. That—if it can keep people from pain, keep people suffering from cancer—I have seen how it helped people who were suffering from cancer, and so I certainly was not opposed to that. But I was opposed to it being sold in Revere simply because I thought that was a slippery slope, that it was going to—it would—if we start with a medical marijuana, then we will go on to the recreational marijuana. I still understand that she banned—that the Attorney General banned—the transportation to facility. I do not think there was a ban on somebody carrying it in and out. We don't have enough police that we can stop people from doing that. I understand, as I have been reading all along, that if the community voted against the marijuana law—and happily, I—I must say that I was surprised that Revere did, and I was very happy—but I learned later that I should not have been so surprised. Revere Cares does a program every year in the public schools to say, "This is our program. This is our, you know, our Power of No program. You need to know where your kids are going. You need to know where your kids are doing, what your kids are doing. You need to be there for them." And one of the ways you do that is that you fill out the pledge that you will do everything you can, you'll talk to your kids, all of that. Some of you who are parents here have signed that pledge. Certainly Patrick must have. And many people do. Well, the last time I was assigned to the Hill School, and as I came in and we talked to them all about, you know, "Listen, we'd like you to sign this pledge, and we give you this literature, and this is how to keep your kids safe from drugs and alcohol," I couldn't get over how many people said that they were happy, that they were proud, that Revere voted not to have recreational marijuana. And they said, "But what can we do? It passed in the state." And I kept saying that my impression was, if it passed in—if it passed in your city and town—and I think there were only two in this area anyway—that where the people actually voted against recreational marijuana—that the city council could take a vote. Now, I can understand that you might be looking for some legal guidance in this. That's prudent, certainly. But the first step is to vote against it. It sends a message. It sends a message to the people out there, "We heard your vote. You were—you voted against this in our town. We don't want it here, and we're going to honor what you voted for, and we will stand up for it, and we will go, and if we need to"—I mean, I don't want us to be going to the Supreme Court over it. Of course not. But I truly do not think that that is necessary. I will not interpret the law. I only know what I read in the newspapers. The newspapers say that if your community voted against it, then—then a ban could be made merely by a vote of the city council. And so I would urge the city council to take that first step and to vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and record.
My name is Karen Caldwell. Okay. My name is Karen Caldwell, and I live at 95 Stanton Ave. I grew up in Revere. I graduated Revere High. And in the years since, I earned a doctor, a medical doctor. I work as a primary care physician. And I wanted to use this opportunity to express my concern about recreational marijuana on the youth of the city. And my concerns are based on a New England Journal article from 2014 on the adverse health effects of marijuana use. What I took from this—this article is that marijuana use by youth is out in the community. They estimated 6.5% of seniors, and they said they think it's an underestimate. They talked about marijuana on the developing brain, which takes up to age 21, has more powerful effects. And the things that they listed with an overall level of confidence of high as to the adverse effect of marijuana include addiction to marijuana and other drugs, diminished lifetime achievement, motor vehicle accidents, and symptoms of chronic bronchitis. Now, I'm a doctor, not a lawyer, and I leave you folks to figure out the—the technicalities of the law, but I would ask you to keep in mind that this would adversely affect our young people year after year. Thank you.
My name is Daniel Frationi. I live at 109 Leverd Ave, Revere. I also want to include myself that I'm 100% against marijuana seals in general. But I—I see a black hole as far as if the surrounding towns are selling it. And again, I'm 100% against marijuana seals. But if you have the surrounding towns, Everett, Malden, and everyone makes a ban here to say, "No, we're not going to sell it. No, we're not going to have recreational," I really feel that a lot of people are going to be in denial because, as far as I can remember, when I was a kid—and I'm 61 years young, there were people who drank and people who smoked marijuana. Now, as many people that are here want to say, "Oh, I've never seen that. I've never heard of it. I don't have any friends that smoke marijuana," but indeed, they—there are a lot that do, and a lot that will not admit that they smoke marijuana. My biggest problem is the surrounding towns, Malden, Everett, Chelsea, whatever, they enacted, they're going to sell it. It's going to be here. It's here already. It's always been here as long as I can remember. I can go up and down streets that I've smelt it in the air, and I'm sure many of people have smelt it in the air. And like many councils have said, it's the law. You're not going to stop it from coming in. It's very sad that Revere is going to lose that 3%. And again, may all the—the—the flaming arrows come at me right now. I'm just a resident here. I'm a taxpayer here. I'm a voter here. But if the king is not wearing any clothes, and all the people looking at the king and saying, "Oh, yeah, he's got clothes on," I have to say that a lot of people are going to be in denial because if you think the kids that are smoking are not going to smoke because Revere has banned, think again. It's going to be the same numbers no matter how hard you try.
Thank you. We're going to try and—I just want—I don't want to cut you off, but we're going to try and get as many people to speak as we can. So we're going to try and keep to—
Okay.
But thank you, and I—and I appreciate your—your—your thoughts on this and your support. Thank you.
Thank you. My thoughts.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Viviana Catano. I'm a staff member of the Revere Cares Coalition, but most importantly, I'm here on my day off because I'm a homeowner in Revere. I live on Mountain Avenue. I'm raising two children, and tonight I am joined with—by a new parent group. They're called Revere Parents in Action. They have participated in the Parent Leadership Program to learn how to advocate for their needs of their children. So they're—they have come here, and they would like me to share with you some points. So first of all, Counselor Morabito, thank you so much for your words. That's the first thing that I am most concerned about in my main point tonight is about what happens when you lead an industry in your town. Once an industry has a clause in your town, it becomes very difficult to then regulate them for the best interest of the public. And as Morabito was saying, we have fought in this community for three, four years against the predatory tactics of the tobacco industry. They use flavored products so that they can attract these kids, so they can attract the youth in Revere. Why? Because they want profits. And we have not been able to pass a flavor ban in this town because every time we try to do something proactive, pro-health for our kids, guess what? The industry has resources, and they come and they fight. Meanwhile, I am a parent at the Hill School, and I have to walk by by the flavored tobacco litter every single day. I—I—I challenge you to come walk with me to the Hill School and tell me if you don't see grape flavor, banana flavor. And I'm a parent in prevention, and I know what that means. I know that's the industry trying to addict my child. And what I don't want now is to have that tobacco—that flavored tobacco joined by a little wrap for a cookie, a marijuana cookie wrap, or a marijuana candy edible because this thing is Rice Krispies, popcorns. This is not just about smoking, folks. This is about brownie wraps. This is about Rice Krispie treats. This is about lollipops, and I don't want to see that stuff littering Broadway because, as people say, they're going to buy it, and they're going to—and it's going to spread all over the city. So thank you, Morabito, for saying that. I also wanted to—people were talking about the law, and I very quickly want to fill you in. The industry was the one that put forward this language, and they put this language forward in their best interest. The language has now gone to the state. Our own representative, Rosalie Vincent—you can invite her here to speak about this issue because she was part of the committee that reviewed the law and says this is the law that's actually going to be put forward. So the state has now released under the House Bill 3818 that states, "Communities that oppose the November 16 ballot question can unilaterally ban marijuana establishments within their borders." So if you're looking for the law against that, House Bill Number 3818. This was—before, it was very fuzzy. It wasn't—it wasn't clear what power communities were going to have, whether we're going to be—they were going to be lawsuits if community says no, but now the state has said, "Okay, let's clarify this." And for communities that said no, you now have the right by—by your council, our guardians of the city, to say no. So please look that up. Also, I am very excited as a resident because I've been hearing some really wonderful things from the mayor and from those of you who work on our economic development, that there's some really exciting prospects happening for a city. For example, I heard that the mayor is working with Marty Walsh to possibly put a bid for Amazon where Suffolk Downs is, that you guys are trying to create a tech district where Necco is, and I'm really excited. That's the type of business revenue that I want to see in the city, something that makes our city thrive, that makes our city shine. And I ask you, councilors, please, for 3% tax sales, let's not sell out on a product that profits on people's addiction. Yes, people—I agree with you. People are going to use it, but we don't have to take the addiction money. We don't have to let an industry that is then—anytime we're going to try to do backtrack, backtrack, they're going to fight against us. And thank you, Guanasso, for informing yourself on this issue. And again, councilors, I commend you for what you do. I know it's not an easy thing to be a leader, to try to do the best thing for a city. I personally wouldn't want to put up with everything that you guys have to do, but I do ask you tonight to please take a stand for our kids. And I know I'm running out of time, but very, very quickly. And when people ask you, "Okay, everybody else is going to be doing it, it's going to be sold here and there," well, I want to tell you something very specific about Revere teens. The Coalition does many focus groups with our youth to inform our campaigns and our work. And for the eight years I have been with the Coalition, the youth have same—have been saying, "Marijuana is not harmful, is less harmful and addictive than tobacco." And they got this message because we legalized it, and now we told them that some people can use it for medicine, so it must be okay for them. So the reason why we want to ban it in Revere is we want to send a message to our youth, guys, because everybody else is doing it, it doesn't mean that we have to. Okay? So thank you very much for listening to me, and have a good night.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience? Thank you. Anyone else in the audience looking to speak?
How you doing?
State your name and rank. We all know you, but for the audience—
Pastor Tim Bogerman. I live at 40 Winthrop Avenue, and I'm a pastor here in Revere at the First Congregational Church. I just want to remind all you councilors, I thank you so much for representing us, and I heard some of your comments already. You know, I—I have had times where I opposed you, and I've worked with you, and I know this is not easy, what you do. You do hard work here, and I appreciate all that you're doing. I just want to ask you to remember to represent us. You know, this is—a city voted against this. We had about 1,000 votes or more against this in our city, which means that it comes from what I understand, it goes to you as a council. I think this has been said, but reminding you, we voted against it. I have kids in the city, and I have—I know young people that I care about that are affected by this, and we ask that you represent us on this. And I ask that you would consider, as you vote today, as you consider to say, "I know there's legal ramifications you're concerned about," but that this matters, this vote today. You are speaking for us, and we're asking, "It's—we voted—we are a community that voted against it. Please do this and think about families, children, and communities that are affected, not only in our congregations, but in the families that live here." Has been said so well already that we care about the city, and we believe there's a future we have that can be great. And I'm just asking you to do so. Thank you for your time, for your concerns. And Counselor Zambudo, thank you for also standing your concerns as well. We may disagree many times, but I appreciate you care about the city, and I do as well, and we want the best for us, and ask that you represent us today in the vote that was made in Revere. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I thought I was going to be late. Thank you very much for this opportunity to talk on this very important issue. I'm sorry. Ed DeVoe, 216 Crescent Ave, Beauchamp. Obviously, I'm not in favor of permitting recreational marijuana here or stores at this point in time. For many years, you know, the city's been trying to overcome a stigma of its past. Many people in the city are working tirelessly to move the city forward and shape an image of a city that's healthy, vibrant, and a multicultural community deserving of more admiration and praise than it really gets these days, and we all know how hard that's hard—is for Revere. Although marijuana is legal and the city zoning ordinances will keep the stores contained in a somewhat isolated area, I believe strongly that it will set us back a few steps in rebuilding the city and its reputation. Rather than set up recreational marijuana stores, we need to work to bring other clean, wholesome businesses to the city. As voters in Milford put it, "Protect our children, provide greater public safety, and safeguard the integrity of our community." I would venture to guess that if prostitution were legalized in the state, you all would definitely not be in favor of that. So I'd say, "Let's apply the same standard to this issue." Although it's not as bad as prostitution, it's still an important issue that we need to vote on and make sure does not take place. We need to apply the same standard. It may not bring in money, but it's worth it when you consider the image it portrays to the city. I'm sorry, it may bring in money, and forgive me, because that's one of the things many proponents say, the 3% tax, it's going to bring in a lot of money. Well, if it brings in money, what's the cost of that money? What are going to be— What are gonna be the issues that come about there? What are gonna be the additional costs associated with marijuana and the issues that go on there? When you look at, you know, the fact that we've been able to corral it in an undesirable area, well, the fact that it is in an undesirable area, I think is gonna create problems, problems for our public safety, whom we need to put in other locations. The other thing, we already have a high percentage of alcoholism and drug abuse that adversely affect our community and strain the limited resources available to address the problems and the issues that come along with them. Why do we need to add recreational marijuana to the mix? You know, I've tried to think about what good will come from it, and as I mentioned earlier, the only thing I can think of is the additional revenue. Proponents say that there will be money to address existing social needs and issues. I haven't heard anything, and if it were to happen, we wanna make sure that every penny that comes into this city from medical marijuana, or recreational marijuana, or medical for that matter, should go to recreational use, educational use, the use to help people who are, you know, drug abusers, who are fallen ill to that illness and that disease. But what about the additional costs, as I mentioned earlier, that come with the sale? What are they? How much other revenue will be needed to address these costs? Will there be enough left over to address existing social needs? Do you have the answers? I don't know. Maybe you do. But those are the things that I think we need to think about. In the end, I think it's too early for Revere to consider allowing the sale of recreational marijuana. There are still too many questions. I don't think the money to be gained at this point will be worth the pains and the problems that will come with the learning curve that will be experienced by communities that approve it now. We don't need to be pioneers in this venture. We should wait and watch, and maybe, maybe, at some point in the future, reexamine the issue and give it some thought, but we don't wanna go there now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anthony Cargliandro, 105 Newman Street. I am a proponent of this motion. Everyone's talking about the number of votes we got. It was a lot closer than we think, and I don't think we should use that as a reason. We should listen to the voters. It was voted unanimously that the people of the city don't want it. Does anybody up here know how easy it is to get a medicinal card? Anybody? Extremely easy. We do not need pot shops. We're gonna have a dispensary in the Ted District. We do not need to put it anywhere else. I am totally 100% against that. We need to stop thinking about money and start thinking about our families, and start making decisions with our hearts. I'm a father and a teacher in this city. And over my dead body, are my students gonna show up smelling like that or with the ability to get it so easily? So I ask you all to please hop on board with Councilor Keefe's motion here. And if you need a sidekick, you said you'd be the champion, I will strap on a cape, and I'll be right next to you. Thank you.
Well, there's an approach that we can take on this, and I do believe that we have a city solicitor that, if need be, can jump in front of the train if he feels that this train is derailed, me being that train. And I'm gonna go for a Hail Mary here right now. I'd rather take an offensive approach on this, rather than taking a different approach than, yes, I am gonna buck the trend tonight, and request that we take a roll call vote on this tonight, and we do not put it in committee. So I'm calling the roll.
I speak first.
Roll call.
I want to speak before the roll.
Roll call.
I want to speak before the roll.
Councilor Zambudo, go ahead.
You didn't wanna talk about Moonlight Video, but I have to bring it up. It was before I was on this council, and it was an emotional vote taken to not allow this pornographic stuff to come into the city. It cost the city a million and a half dollars because we circumvented the law. Don't do it again. Let it go to committee, get a solicitor's opinion, and then vote on it.
Thank you, Councilor Zambudo.
Mr. President, substitute motion.
Roll call.
Substitute motion.
I already called a roll call.
You call, I spoke before you, call the roll call, sir.
I didn't call on you. I did not call, did you hear me call Councilor Zambudo?
Sir, I have a substitute motion.
Call the roll.
I challenge the ruling of the chair. Challenge the ruling of the chair.
And I don't accept your challenge.
You don't have that right, sir. We challenge the ruling of the chair.
Your substitute motion.
Thank you. My substitute motion is that we move it to Legislative Affairs and hear from the city solicitor for one week.
Roll call on Councilor Novoselfsky's substitute motion.
Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso?
No.
No, Councilor McKenna?
No.
No, Councilor Morabito?
No.
Councilor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch?
No.
No, Councilor Powers?
No.
No, Councilor Rotundo is absent. Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council Vice President Keefe?
No.
No, the substitute motion fails.
Call the roll.
Roll call on that the City Council and Planning Board implement a ban on the sale of recreational marijuana in Revere. Councilor Janino?
No.
No, Councilor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
What?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselfsky?
No.
No, Councilor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo is absent. Councilor Zambudo?
No.
No, and Council Vice...
Moonlight Video.
And Council Vice President Keefe?
Yes. Revere 2017.
Can I just make a point of personal privilege, Councilor?
Council Janino?
I just think it's really unfortunate that we didn't have the opportunity to discuss this with our solicitor, because I believe that you didn't get to really hear the true opinions of some people on this council, because there are people that would have happily supported it, but due to lack of knowledge from our city and what's going on, weren't able to explore it and really handle it at its fullest capacity. And it's really a disservice to our residents that we can't take that duty as our job to really explore a situation and find out what we can. And it's frustrating to me, because I don't like to rush things through up here. I wanna take my time, I wanna examine it, and I wanna do it right. And it's frustrating, because I didn't speak, because I thought this would definitely go to committee, and I'd have an hour to talk, because I'm sure there are hundreds of people in the city that wanna talk about this, that couldn't be here tonight, and that didn't know it was gonna be pushed through tonight, because we send everything to committee. So it's frustrating to me that those people aren't gonna be heard, and that I didn't speak, because I thought it would definitely go to committee, and it's frustrating, but I respect it.
I respect your opinion.
Mr. Vice President?
I respect your opinion.
Can I offer a point of information?
Council Guanasso.
Moonlight Video was brought up, Mr. Vice President. I was a member of the City Council when that occurred, and it's two different issues. Number one, we voted as a council to vote against that location while there was an application in progress. So that was an action already in place. So what we did was, we zoned while that was in place. The application was already in hand. We can't do that. The case now, as it is, we have the Ted District, that's in place. We have a zoning area, which is in place, so there's no zoning violation, absolutely none. I'm not an attorney, but I was there. I was part and parcel to it. What we did was, we reacted based on the fact that people were so much against this video store on American Legion Highway, and rightfully so. We protested, we marched in front, we did everything we could. But we didn't do the letter of the law. And the letter of the law was, we didn't precede our action by already having the zoning in place. Very, very simple. Don't have to be an attorney, I will tell you that. And that's a matter of fact. So we do have the zoning in place, called the Ted District. We have a recreational, we have medical marijuana already on board. It's our option to vote this down. And it was through the Legislature, in their wisdom, that they so clearly stated, by allowing a petition to go before the electorate, by stating that if a local city voted against it, that's the will of the people, then it's up to the Revere City Council, or any council thereafter, to vote the manner of which they wanna do, but they have the right to deny it. It's very simple.
Thank you, Council Guanasso.
That's a matter of law.
Thank you. Moving...
Council Order 17-347, motion presented by Councilor McKenna, that the mayor request the Beauchamp MBTA station to install trash barrels inside of the station and next to the newspaper racks. Further, that the DPW install a trash barrel across the street from the station at the bus stop. MBTA users are constantly littering this area due to the lack of trash barrels in this area.
Councilor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. We have the Beauchamp Improvement Committee and all the businesses on board cleaning up Donley Square. And I just feel that the Beauchamp MBTA station needs to improve their good neighbor policy and chip in and help us clean that square. So I'm asking for barrels at the Beauchamp Train Station and across the street at the bus stop. Thank you.
Any other councils wishing to speak? Motion to approve?
Council Order 17-348, motion presented by Councilor Guanasso, that the City Council award a certificate of appreciation to Albert J. Terminello Jr. for 50 years of dedicated service to the Revere League of Special Needs by making a better life for Revere's special citizens through education and social events.
Council Guanasso.
Mr. Vice President, I will save my comments for the night of the award.
Any other councils? Council Janino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President. I just wanna support my colleague's motion. I think it's a great motion on behalf of a very deserving individual, and I also will save my comments.
Thank you. Council Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Mr. President, I think it's an excellent, excellent choice and an excellent call by Council Guanasso. Al Terminello's been my partner with the Revere Veterans Committee for the last 15 years, and I'm proud to call him my partner, and I look forward to seeing him getting the citation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilors? Motion approved? So what?
Council Order 17-349, motion presented by Councilor McKenna, that the mayor request the DPW to investigate the cause of the backups in the bathrooms at the Revere Public Library. Backups are occurring two to three times per week, and especially during heavy rains.
Council McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So it was brought to my attention that the bathrooms in the library are backing up two to three times a week, but no one's saying anything. So it was brought to my attention, I guess a couple of years ago, they had put a camera down the drains to see if it was tree roots, and it wasn't. What's happened is, and I talked to Nick Reisbaum, that what happened is that when they did the sewer line, they did it in a right turn. So what happens is, that water's not getting flushed down the drain in a straight angle. It's getting caught in the right angle that's part of the drain. So Nick said it's an easy fix, so I'd really like the city to investigate and see if this could be done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council McKenna. Any other councils wishing to speak? Motion approved? So moved.
Council Order 17-350, motion presented by Councilor Patch, that the City Council order to a public hearing the attached proposed amendment to the revised ordinances of the city of Revere, an ordinance relative to the feeding of wild animals, wildlife, and birds.
Council Patch.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I had a person call me with a complaint about hundreds of pigeons on the roof. So it was, turned out there was a person feeding, the neighborhood was feeding loads of bread every day in his driveway. Then it turned, I put a complaint in with the Inspector Services, and it's nothing in the ordinance, our ordinance, that prevents this type of feeding. And I'm not against bird feeders. This is, what happened was, this progressed to, there was a rodent problem that developed in the area. So I've been dealing with rodent problems in my ward, as my fellow ward councilors will probably agree with me. It's been a problem throughout the city. And I believe this is one way to stop it, if it's a small way, but it's at least a start. I mean, in the old days, everybody used to feed the birds, and, you know, but today we have to deal with the rodents, mainly because we can't, the city cannot bait areas like they used to when I was younger. So anyways, this will go to a public hearing, and it's taking from ordinance from other cities that prevent it, and like I say, you're still gonna have your bird feed in the backyard, but for going out and giving the animals a loaf of bread every day, it's just, to me, you're creating a problem for the whole neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Council Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Councilor Patch. I have received the same complaints down in my neighborhood, and not only is the birds, you know, the pigeons are disease-carrying rodents themselves. Bringing the four-legged rodents around is just enhancing the problem. I don't know where they got $490 for a fine up to, but I think it's needed. I'm just concerned about enforcement. I know we have two departments authority over this, but I just hope that they take it seriously, because there are a lot of ordinances we have in this city that are not taken seriously, that we put into effect. And I feel very badly about that, and I just don't want things like that to happen. I want things enforced. We put them there for a reason. We want them protected for a reason. So thank you very much.
Point of information, please. Council Patch?
Yeah, on that matter of the fine, it says any person violating any provision in this chapter should be liable for a fine, not less than 25 or more than $490. Nobody's gonna get on there and get a fine for $490. But if somebody gets the $25 a fine and keeps feeding the birds, you're gonna go up and up and up until, you know, they get the message. Thank you.
Council Janino?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is a great motion on behalf of Councilor Patch, and I have to applaud him, because it's not something that someone would think of in order to target this issue, but it's really quite genius. This is a huge, huge issue in the city, and it's affecting every single neighborhood. I know, Councilor Keefe, you're dealing with it in Ward 4, up in Reservoir Ave, in that area. It's terrible, especially when we develop these new developments, like building the Hill School, when we break ground on any large development, even baited properly, we're still gonna have that issue. If your neighbor's doing construction on their house, you're gonna have that issue. It's just the nature of the beast, and we're struggling in the city of Revere with it, and so are our surrounding communities right now. And I think any little measure that we can take to help prevent it is a great measure. It's something you might not even think of. If you're throwing stale breadcrumbs out to feed the birds, you're not gonna think about rats, because it's something you might have been doing for 20 or 30 years. But it's really a smart motion on behalf of Councilor Patch, and I know, as my ward councillor, I appreciate it, because even my area is inundated with them, and my neighbors are facing it. I see rodent trucks up my street every other day. There are several of my neighbors that are dealing with it right now, and it's something we need to address, and I hope that this, it might be a small step, but it's one in the right direction. So thank you, Councilor.
Council Guanasso.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Several years back, I had a neighbor who was feeding these stray cats, and what she would do, she would put the bread out and the food out. And what would happen is, I live near the marsh, and there'd be a parade. The skunks would come, the rodents would come. It would be like a parade coming up to get their feeding. And I'm saying, lowering me home, this poor lady's trying to do the right thing, feed these stray cats, but she's creating havoc within an area, because everyone's complaining. You see the skunk? You see the coyote? I said, I know, I'm gonna talk to her about... So leaving food out is not a good thing. And birds are so wild, and wild animals are supposed to learn how to hunt. They have the same thing down Revere Beach. I have a friend that had a similar situation, where a man would go out and feed the birds, and there'd be tons of seagulls, there'd be tons of pigeons flying all about, dropping their droppings, and very, very unhealthy for the whole neighborhood. But I understand that they went to Rosalie, Representative Rosalie Vincent...
they went to Rosely, Representative Rosely Vincent, and she came up with the state law for some reason, and they placed a sign right on Revere Beach, "No Feeding the Birds", because their natural quality is to hunt their food. And so we're doing a disservice to these animals by feeding them. So I think it's every right in the world that we put a stop to this because there's nothing more unhealthy than bird droppings. And so I think it's a good motion, and I look forward to its passage.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councilors wishing to speak? This is going to be ordered to a public hearing. All in favor? So moved.
Council Order 17-351, late motion presented by Councilor Keith that the mayor requests the city's state delegation to approve special legislation allowing the installation of a plaque at the DCR Cronin Rink in honor of Roger Naples for his years of dedicated service to Revere sports.
Council Novoseltsky.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Mr. Vice President, this is a great motion. I know Roger very well, and I actually worked with him at the stadium when he was announcing the high school football games. And I've been there since 1963. So I've been around, I've seen a few people go through there. And I think Roger is a very capable person. He's a very nice guy, cares about the sports like your motion said. But I personally think that the location should be at the stadium, in the press box, that we put a plate for him. And, you know, the DCR rink is good, but we have to go through legislation, and right now, they'll, I don't know if they're in session now, but that may not happen until next year. And I think we can get the plate and the plaque done a lot faster through the city. So I would like to substitute that motion with the Harry Delarussault Stadium press box.
Thank you, Council Novoseltsky. So what I, that would be, since it's my motion, we could change that to the press box at Harry Delarussault Stadium rather than the DCR rink for the timeliness of it, but also the activity that Mr. Naples had there. Council Guanasso.
I wouldn't hold down on that for a second. All due respect to my dear friend from Ward Two. Roger Naples was one of the founders of Gallery Guards at Bruins, Boston Bruins. And he was one of the founders, well, that whole section up there in the heavens was the Gallery Guards. And so nothing's more appropriate to place his name, also in conjunction to maybe Delarussault Stadium, the Cronin Rink, because he was a Bruin nut. He really loves the Bruins, and that was his really livelihood. And he had his own gallery up there. And so they were known as the Gallery Guards, and for years, he's been renowned. All of the Bruins players knew of him. They all welcomed him into their home, into their friendship. So I think it's a great honor being placed upon him. I understand now, he was hospitalized for a few weeks, but he's now back in good spirits. He's back home, I believe. And so I think this is a great motion to honor and respect the man who really brought a lot of good prestige to our city. Because I remember reading Boston newspapers and saying all the good things that Roger Naples did in reference to the Gallery Guards. So that's, because it was the cheapest seat, and everybody was available to everybody. And so it was just a great tribute. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Councilor. Council Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. With all due respect to my colleagues and their opinions, I think to put it in the press box, it would not be seen by that many people. And that is the purpose of a plaque. Roger Naples worked for probably 35 years at the Recreation Department in the City of Revere, and by all accounts was very popular, did an excellent job. I don't think you would find another area in the city, maybe outside of City Hall, where more people would come into a building, children, adults, et cetera. And I think that something like that, again, with all due respect to my colleagues, should, belongs in a place where it's visible continually to the general public. And I think that no other place than the Recreation Department on Beach Street could be more appropriate. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Powers. And Council Janino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have an idea, and my gears are turning as I'm listening to you speak. What if we offer a citation before the Thanksgiving game at the stadium so everyone can be there and be present, but still put the plaque up at a later date at the DCR?
Good point. Mr. Naples has received a citation recently, in the last few years. And so we have given him that recognition already, which has been very deserved. And Council Patch, it looks like Mr. Naples is very popular.
Well, that's what I was going to say. We could cut up the plaque. But I tell you, Roger, I got another spot. I mean, because Roger, back in the late 50s, 60, when I was probably going in my teens, I was a member of the Colombian Squires, like a Junior Knights of Columbus. And Roger was a mentor, along with other fine gentlemen. And that was at the site where the senior center is now, that was the Knights of Columbus. So I could go on. I mean, we can't put it at Hill Park anymore because that's gone. He was a great pitcher at Hill Park, announcer at Hill Park. I mean, he's done it all. And he's a great guy and a great man. And whatever you decide, I'm 100% for. Thank you.
Council Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think, if I'm not mistaken, it's either today or tomorrow, is Roger's 97th birthday, is it?
October 1st, yes. October 1st, he'll be 97 years young.
So we got to wish Roger a happy birthday. Roger's a legend. I mean, everybody, for me, he swore me in as a, I took the class for the Knights of Columbus many, many moons ago. I don't want to say how many years ago, but quite a few years ago. And he is just, he's an institution, and whatever we do for him, it's not enough. Thank you.
Council Morabito.
Thank you. I've known Roger since I was a little kid. My dad was a barber, and he used to go to him, go to his shop and get his hair cut. Over the years, they've developed a relationship, even when Roger was unable to leave his house for specific reasons that I'm not going to mention here. My father would go to his house because he was such a guy, so, he respected him so much. And he was such a kind man to my dad. My dad would go there and cut his hair for him when he wasn't able to leave his house. And I got to know, when I entered politics, I got to know Roger Naples as an avid supporter of Revere. And he just always, he left his mark in Revere. And he will continue to do so as long as he can. And whether it's in a box office, or if we light up his name in bright lights, it's well deserved.
Council McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I have to agree with my councillor on my left, Council Powers. I worked with Roger at the youth center for years. He was there. I've got all autographs. He used to bring me in, autographed pictures from Barbie Ohr, Terry O'Reilly. But I think he made his mark in the Parks and Recreation Center. So I think that would be a great idea for people to see, you know, where he worked, and you have a lot of people going in there. It's not hidden. So I do agree with Council Powers on that mention. Thank you.
Thank you, Council McKenna. As the maker of the motion, I would just, I guess if we can clarify and have a plaque in his honor for a location to be determined through the mayor's office, and we'll decide. And I could tell you that I received a number of emails from friends of Roger, and I was able to see, along with Council Zambudo, Roger the other night. We're all brother knights. And he's in great spirits. He will be 97 years young on October 1st. And I think that this would be an unbelievable way to show our appreciation to him. Just by the show of the council, and we're thinking of 20 different locations to honor him, just shows how much of an impact he had in the City of Revere in his 97 years. So God bless Roger, and we will hopefully decide a location to be determined. So all in favor? So moved.
Council Order 17-352, late motion presented by Council Powers that the mayor requests the traffic commission to investigate the feasibility of making streets off of Northshore Road on Riverside one-way between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m. Currently, vehicles traveling from the Northshore are using Mills Ave as a cut-through to avoid the Mills Ave traffic signal. This is creating a dangerous situation for children waiting for school buses on Mills Ave.
Council Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've had a problem down there the past year or so. And basically, what's happening is people, motorists are going down John Avenue, which heads west off of Northshore Road to beat the traffic light and save five minutes down on Mills Avenue. Problem is that we have school buses going down there in the morning. And they pick up the kids, for some reason, on the opposite side, not on the sidewalk where they were picking them up a few years ago. And we don't want to have a serious accident down there. We don't want to have some child seriously injured or worse. And I think that similar to what we have on Sagamore Street, do not enter 7:00 to 9:00 a.m., and have some enforcement down there. So we, the people that ignore that, we send a strong message to them, and perhaps that'll cut down tremendously on the people that are using that as a cutoff. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Powers. Any other councilors wishing to speak? Come in the audience.
Eric Lampadecchio, 43 Tapley Avenue. I grew up on Mills Ave. I lived there for about 25 years. My family is still down there. On a busy day, you might see a maximum of 50 cars, and this traffic issue is really getting out of control down there. The gridlock on 1A is forcing a lot of folks to use the cut-through streets and shoot up Mills Ave. For the first time ever, we had a car accident on Mills Ave about six months ago. That's unbelievable. It's unprecedented. This motion needs to pass. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Any other councilors? Motion to approve? Oh, and we also. Motion to approve?
We have one late, late motion by Council Powers that the City Council revoke the special permit that is perceived by CBW Lending LLC of New York to be valid. It is the contention of the City of Revere that they did, in fact, violate conditions of the original permit by the continued parking of vehicles, and further that the original permit was for 800 vehicles, and at times they have exceeded that number by parking 1,500 vehicles.
Council Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, it is my contention, and I'm certain the contention of the City of Revere, that if you read paragraph seven of the special permit, it clearly states that in 2015, July 1, that permit is not valid anymore. As required by ordinance, the permit is issued for a commercial parking, which would be similar to a parking lot, similar to a commercial garage. Now, I understand that the building inspector sent a letter to the LLC lending in New York, AKA Wonderland, to cease and desist. The attorney representing them sent a letter to the city, which I don't have the copy of the letter with me, but I do have it at home, indicating that the city did not have the right to avoid a special permit, okay? It is the contention of the city and myself that we do have that right. It was a specific time. And the second violation is the permit was issued for 800 vehicles when it was issued several years ago. They have exceeded that. They have violated the conditions of the special permit on not one but two occasions. And I'm going to ask that, this is going to, they've appealed it to the Zoning Board of Appeals. I will be at the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. I want those cars out of there. The residents of Ward Five and that area want them out of there, and nothing less than that should happen. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Powers. Any other councilors wishing to speak? So this will be a request sent to the mayor's office to have the building inspector follow up on this, correct?
Yeah, we will follow up on it, and also the ZBA should deny them. And I know they will probably appeal at the Superior Court. However, what they're doing is looking to buy time down there and rake in some more money, and it's not benefiting this city or the residents of this city one iota. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Powers. It's my understanding we're not allowed, as a city council, to revoke a special permit, so we would have to request that the mayor, mayor's office go through the building department or request the building department revoke the special permit, correct?
That's correct. The building inspector has that right to revoke the special permit. They have the right to appeal to the ZBA, which I understand they have done. And I will be at that next ZBA meeting answering that. Thank you.
So motion to approve that the building inspector revoke the special permit. All in favor? And that is a recap, our finalization of our meeting. The next scheduled meeting will be on October 2nd. Have a great night.